The council meeting of April 2nd will come to order. Good evening. Would ask that all in attendance please turn off or silence your electronic devices, and if you would please stand to honor God and country. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace. Lord God, as we make decisions that affect citizens, businesses, and partners at Temple Terrace, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We thank you that Councilwoman Schisler is on the mend and continue to pray for a speedy and complete recovery. We ask these things in your name. Amen. And now the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business this evening would ask PISO Elementary School Principal Amber Cronin to come to the podium for the State of the School address.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening, Principal.
Thank you for having us. My name is Amber Cronin, the principal of PISO K-8. This is my first year at PISO, and I could not be more proud of our school this year. We currently serve about 930 students in grades pre-K to 5. In addition, over the course of the next two years, we are transitioning to a K-8. So this year, we began with our sixth graders, who will, over the course of the next two years, roll into 7th and 8th grade, at which time, we will be a full pre-K to 8th school, which we are very, very excited about. This year, we have a renewed focus on building a positive school culture, which has resulted in increased student attendance, increased participation from families, and increased student achievement data compared to this time last school year. For example, our reading formative data across all of our grade levels have shown an increase when compared to last year. And this is just one piece of data that really highlights the amazing things that are happening within our school and our community. We also know how important it is to have a strong sense of community. And this year, we have several different partnerships that we've joined with that have really made a positive impact for us. We've partnered with the Junior League of Tampa Bay, 100 Black Men, and countless USF and community organizations to come in to mentor, to support, and to work with our students. We also continue to have our partnership with the University of South Florida UTRIP program, which builds a strong teaching capacity within our USF College of Education residents that are within our school, which has resulted in some really great hiring opportunities for us as a school district. So we're very excited about continuing that partnership with them. I would also like to thank you, the City of Temple Terrace, for your support. It's so wonderful to be a part of a greater community that really puts education first. From the New Teacher Breakfast to the community grants that we've had, it has really been a pleasure coming back and working in this area. I am a product of Temple Terrace myself. I attended River Hills, Greco, and King High School, and so it's really neat to be back here, serving in a different capacity. So thank you all for your support of our school as well. And then, speaking of our grants, it would not be possible to do such wonderful things without you guys helping us out with those, so thank you so much for that. I would like to turn it over to Cam Dennison, who is our VE teacher and also Teacher of the Year from PISO, to share the positive impact that those Temple Terrace grants have had on our school and our community. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Cameron Dennison, and I am here on behalf of the grant recipients from PISO Elementary. First, we would like to thank you so much. It has such a big impact on our school, starting with our pre-K ESE kiddos. They received sensory materials, such as letter bubbles for the water table, that have helped to increase letter identification skills. Their sensory gel shapes have provided much-needed tactile input during small group lessons. They've been able to help teach basic shapes to the developmentally younger students who need additional support to acquire those concepts. They also wanted to thank you for helping them purchase the kinetic sand that really helps them give the ability to create different shapes. Next, we have from Ms. Schwartz. She is one of our kindergarten ESE teachers. They utilize the hands-on alphabet materials to provide the students with interactive phonics practice daily. The engaging materials have helped to capture the students' attention through a multisensory experience. She would like to say thank you so much. We also have Ms. Schneider, Ms. Fortiani, and myself got one for our 3rd grade ESE and ELL kiddos, along with our gen ed classroom. We got flexible seating for our classroom to include Z-Desk, yoga balls, bumpy cushions that have really given our students the opportunity to move while they learn. They love coming in every morning and choosing what they want to sit and really taking ownership over that, so we really appreciate that help. And then Ms. Smith is one of our 3rd grade teachers. She ordered fluency reading passages to help increase her students' fluency. The students loved reading together, monitoring their progress, and using timers when reading the passages. They then answered comprehension questions after reading, which really helped them to prepare for the FSA and for their further grades here in Hillsborough County. She said that on the district-wide computer-based diagnostic, the overall class scores in reading, both sight words and word decoding, increased, and that the materials really helped to contribute to the students' growth. So on behalf of the PISO Temple Terrace grant recipients, we would like to say thank you so much.
Thank you, and welcome home, Principal.
Thank you.
And next, would ask Tampa Bay Tech Principal Michael Ippolito to come forward for his State of the School address.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna wait for a projection to pop up up there.
Good evening.
Not that one. There we go. I got a lot of pictures, more than anything else, to kind of like showcase Tampa Bay Tech over the past school year here in Hillsborough County. The first one, most of you have probably seen this scattered throughout the school district, a 90-by-20 logo, which is indicating 90% graduation rate from all high school seniors by 2020. And the reason I put that up there is several factors to that. One is that logo was designed by one of our students. Hillsborough County came up with a competition for students to design a logo. Our commercial arts students entered it, and one of them won the contest two years ago in the design of the 90-by-20 logo. But more important than that is the sheer fact that we've been over 90% graduation rate for the last six years. So even though we're pushing for everybody to be at 90% by 2020, we've been doing it much longer than that. And really, we've been at the two highest graduation rates for the county the last two years running, and you'll see that with a couple of other slides that are coming up here, with 98% last year, and then 99% for really two years ago, and 99% for last year. That's always a year lag in data since we're currently in this school year. Some of the stuff up there, it's kind of hard to read, but I just showcase a few things with we've been an A or B school based on the state's grading system for the past 13 years, highest percentage of students earning industry certifications, or AP credit, or a dual enrollment credit. And those all factor into school grade with the accelerator points that are used by the county, by the state in establishing the school grade. And 42 kids went this past week to Orlando to compete in the HOSA competition, Health Occupation Students of America, and we have seven going from state to the international competition this summer. And then I couldn't go past the accolade of 99.1. It's called 99, but we throw that .1% in there because somebody, that was somebody at Tampa Bay Tech of the 442 seniors last year. What makes us successful? There's a huge number of factors. Kids apply to come to us. They're there for a reason. They have a drive, an educational goal, and a career goal at the same time. And then business partners. And there's a business actually here in Hillsborough, in Temple Terrace, that has really helped out a lot with the architecture program that we have, and they allow job shadowing to take place there. And they actually have employed several of our students in their senior year and after post-high school graduation in its architectural engineering firm called Erickson Technologies. And they've really worked with Mr. Carrier in finding students that can work with them and employ him afterwards. And that's a big thing through the community. Can't go too far without the president coming to your school. I mean, that's something that probably 99.1% of principals can't say has happened to them. He came, he was there really to sign a bill or an act, I guess is I think the proper term, but called the Perkins Act, which is a funding source that's used throughout the nation to fund career source education, which is what we excel at at Tampa Bay Tech. And not just the governor, or excuse me, the president coming, the governor comes, all in the same school year. Mr. DeSantis, Governor DeSantis was there about two months ago and was so impressed with what he saw where he made a proclamation toward supporting Career and Tech Ed education. The young man on the right picture, Glenn, was, you could see him standing there with his dad, and he sat with the governor's wife at the State of the State address because he was called out by the governor in recognition of his career goals as wanting to be a welder and where he's already lined up a job with, most likely, golf marine, who's offered him a position, and he's just waiting to graduate, but he's only a junior at this time. As we move forward, I put one picture here is the, we're 2019 Merit School of Distinction Award. We've been a Merit School of Distinction or Excellence with the Magnet Schools of America for the past, I think, 15 years. But just this year, we also received a new accommodation that they offer, and that is a nationally certified Magnet School of America site. So there's only two other high schools in Hillsborough County that have that besides Tampa Bay Tech. I just couldn't find a logo for that one, so we just got the Excellence one there. And then the rest are just some pictures. A young lady who received an award from Excellence in the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists. Mr. Martinez, one of our cadets in ROTC, was at the county commission meeting where he was, had a proclamation for ROTC, Junior ROTC month, then he was there for that. Channel 10 had us as our School of the Week. Biggest thing there, we got a $1,000 check from Duke Energy as part of the School of the Week. But to show the dedication of our faculty and students here, this all took place really at quarter to five in the morning. That morning show starts like a live feed and Facebook Live feeds, which I didn't even never pay attention to, but the kids were all aware of it. And we had to be up and ready and set up in the rooms for that to take place. And there was no problem getting kids, as you can see there, to come and do that. So that shows their dedication to their education at that point. And then some pictures of Health Academy students at Tampa General. On the right side, they took a picture there by one of the medevac helicopters, and then they were in a room. The gentleman you see there in what looks like civilian clothes is a civilian. He actually is a paid actor by USF, and our students then try and diagnose whatever ailment he's acting out as he's having. It's kind of used more with the med school students at USF, but they let our students kind of go through the motions of that same thing to expose them to it. Architecture students at Frank Lloyd Wright in Lakeland. Commercial art display, when the county needs art projects to display, they always pull on Tampa Bay Tech because of what our students are capable of doing. FFA with awards and ribbons over the course of the year. This was at the state fair. I don't have any from the Strawberry Festival. We had probably twice as many at the Strawberry Festival with some chickens and rabbits and so on that they had there. And I mentioned HOSA with students going to the national competition from the state competition that just happened this past week. But every one of our programs, and I put, there's no way I could put them all because it'd be 21 different slides of just programs, but Culinary Arts, for example, every week, Thursday and Friday, cook for the teachers. Now, it's run like a business. They create a menu, a monthly menu. They charge the teachers. It's not free. And they kind of change that monthly menu kind of like seasonal. So you just had March leave us, so they did some type of Irish food over the course of the month. And they do that every month for a fee, and it's teaching the kids to how to run a business or a restaurant done through the Culinary Arts Program. CPR training, even though that training is done with students in PE classes all over the county, for us, these students have to get the certification training for CPR and pass it, or they're not allowed to go to their clinical sites their senior year because they're working in medical facilities. And anyone in there dressed in scrubs and so on have to be able to perform CPR if needed on a patient. Some pictures of our ROTC inspection that took place back in January. I'm trying to go quick for you guys. Here, architecture students and welding and auto body students are at Career and Tech Ed Construction Day, so they can see what real-world work is like when they go to these sites. And even one of our students, they somehow allowed him to drive the little front-end loader there, but they did it. Girls' basketball, can't go without mentioning them. State champions. There hasn't been a girls' state championship basketball team in Hillsborough County since 1980, and Tampa Bay Tech is the 8A state champions. And then all of our sports really excel. We were, we've been a playoff team in football for the past six years, if I'm not mistaken. This year was the first year our cheerleaders made it to the state finals a couple of months ago. Boys' basketball were district champs. Wrestling made it with their three team captains to regionals, and they were undefeated. And then here's a picture of all of our students who received an athletic scholarship for athletics, and two of those are girls who got athletic scholarships and cheerleading. And I think that's the last one. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here this evening, Principal. Next, if the minutes of the March 19, 2019 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda are items on the consent agenda. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items that are not on the agenda, the city managers and directors who are present in the audience do make note of these items, and we want to ensure all residents that your comments are taken seriously. First this evening, Mr. Charles Loeb.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, happy holiday. The really thing I really came over here to talk to you about was to congratulate you on the opening of the Boys and Girls Club. I saw the article, I knew about it, and I saw the article in Friday's paper. I brought a copy over to Jeanne upstairs and hope that if you all want to make copies up, those people haven't seen it, it was in Friday's Tampa Tribune, not the Times main section. But I did want to mention that to you. I'm not sure if this is really directly on your agenda from what I'm going to say from reading it. It has to do with the SRTAX, but it has to do with my own impressions. Back over, I was talking to Councilwoman Donahue, and she heard me talking about this when it was on, came down to the Hart board meeting. I left on January 14th for the new CEO, and with my luck, nobody from Hart is here because you have that on the agenda tonight, that my idea for a program is about five, five-and-a-half pages, very, very detailed and expansion in what I was talking about. One important thing that I added to in the January 14th letter for Mr. Lemire, I don't know how you pronounce his name, was to have the idea of giving insurance discounts for people that would take, commit to taking the bus or vanpooling, if they'd organize a vanpooling program. So the other point that I did want to bring up, that I think is important too, is about the kids' bus passes. Apparently, the revival of them, for those of you who don't know, the kids used to, they used to, up until last year before Hart ran out of money, they used to bring bus passes for the kids, where they paid for the whole summer over the course of time that was dropped because they were short of money. So we needed a revival. It would be in the city's interest too, because if you get Route 48 readjusted for, to get the Boys and Girls Clubs in, they would have their pass paid for, all the fares paid for, for the whole summer. So when they could use the Boys and Girls Club over the summer. So that would be kind of in the mutual interest. I did want to find out, but I already did find out, if you're going to have something like a town hall meeting, I used to have it go Hillsborough over here to talk about the SRTAX and all that. Hopefully, it will be someone from Hart there as well. That, anyway, I heard it was going to be, I was told it was going to be 7:00 PM at light for Thursday, on Thursday, August, I mean, April 18th. I guess that's pretty much all I wanted to say. And thank you, and good evening. And again, happy holiday, a little bit early, whichever holiday you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb.
Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. Let me put my reading glasses on. I'm a real estate professional, as most of you know, and I'd like to ask, out of respect for Councilman Schisler and Shalura, that Mr. Ross, please, as a show of respect, I would ask that you make a motion to lay on the table until scheduled the annexation workshop. The city annexing territory to increase revenue base is haphazard manner, does not positively impact our economic future. It is ultimately a costly and unproductive endeavor. The current rain tree and subdivision close to telecom are two examples of one house being in Temple Terrace boundaries and others not. Just like a rain tree, and you've got Oban, Moffett, and the others, Greenfield, that are not Temple Terrace. It's not consistent. We need to clean up residential boundary issues, not create more due to lack of forethought. To expand our city by grabbing any piece of territory carries a very high price. Neighbors of the annexation, under consideration, felt strongly enough to attend last council meeting to say no, thank you. Simply saying annexing this one house gets a foot in the door to the neighborhood to get more annexations in the future is not a sound planning of financial or financial decision-making. Annexation is a desperate ad hoc and does not make sense to me. I know from my point of view, when I'm out showing houses, I have to actually clarify in the city which is city, which is county, and which is Tampa, because we are so irregular. And it's very difficult. People come in thinking they're looking at Temple Terrace, and it's actually county. This particular annexation has already cost the city more in staff and energy than it will generate in annual taxes. The email sent by petitioner to council members and the mayor proposes garbage pickup solutions that is neither elegant nor, I believe, legal, suggesting that they take their garbage and place it in another street within Temple Terrace boundaries. This is dumping solution, not one anybody should champion. And let's think of the emergency vehicles. I mean, how are they going to? Believe our city's time is better spent focused on commercial annexation for tax purposes as well. Going forward, we need to develop annexation plan based on existing service capabilities with an intentional focus on determining desired growth areas and the benefits of the city that the city will reap from such annexation. Scattered annexation without density costs us in terms of human resources, time, finances, and the American Planning Association has documented time, talent, and treasure costs. Recommend ahead of annexation workshop, a review of this, their November 2017 article, "Annexation: The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly." So I ask you, Mr. Ross, I know that you were not for it at the time, and again, out of respect for the others, please table this. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, we will move to item 8A, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement regarding the transportation sales SRTAX. City Attorney Pam Shoshon will explain.
Thank you. This is an interlocal agreement that has been negotiated and created by the joint efforts of the attorneys representing the City of Tampa, myself for Temple Terrace, attorney for Plant City for Hart, the attorney for Hillsborough County, and the, also representing the municipal planning organization. The reason why we worked to put this together is because the amendment to the Hillsborough County Charter, which is Article 11, that was recently passed by the electorate's vote this last election cycle, the amendment itself called for us to come up with and enter into an interlocal agreement. It was part of the requirement of the article, and we've received a letter from the clerk saying that basically, none of us are going to get any money from this SRTAX until we arrive at this interlocal agreement. Each one of these organizations is presenting the same interlocal agreement to its governing body. I believe Hart may have done theirs yesterday, but it's either going to be done this week or next week. Everybody's meetings were within these same two weeks, which was fortunate. You've been supplied with this prior to this meeting, so if you have any specific questions about it, I'm going to try to answer it. Much of what is in here tracks the actual charter amendment itself, so it isn't something that the attorneys all came up with off the top of their heads. Initially, some of it was, and we ended up paring it back and getting rid of the extraneous in order to track the amendment itself without any extravervage. It sets forth the, some of the procedure that the organizations would have to abide by in order to submit their plans for consideration by the IOC, which is the oversight group that was also established by the amendment. And essentially, entering into this at this time, the purpose of it is mainly to set forth the fact that each one of these organizations is recognizing and accepting that the distribution under the, of the SRTAXes as set forth in the amendment is acceptable to everyone. So it's pretty much everybody's saying, we agree, we accept this distribution, and we'll abide by this. Entering into this doesn't cost us anything. There's no financial obligation related to this. Under this, we stand only to gain our portion of the SRTAXes once they are distributed. Yes?
Ms. Shoshon, and this came up at, not this month's MPO meeting, but at our last month's MPO meeting. The mayor from Plant City had the same question that I had. Through the charter, we were told that due to the low amount that our two cities would be getting, we really are somewhat independent and autonomous, that we will not have to be going before the IOC and getting their blessing that based on the priority list that is developed within our city, we are going to be able to go forward with projects. And certainly, I know Mr. Stevenson and his team is working collaboratively to, with the county on some of the projects that are going on, so that we're not both focused on the same issues. But I wanted to ensure, I read through it, and I just didn't see that assurance and thought I wanted to ask that tonight, that we are independent and autonomous.
That is the understanding that all of the different groups have with relation to Plant City and the City of Temple Terrace. I know that they seem to be expecting that we will notify them of what our projects are, but we don't have to get the blessing as the other agencies will.
Are there any other questions?
It was my understanding that while we don't have to have something approved, if we were going to be doing something, let's say, in partnership with USF or Hillsborough County or whatever, that was when that would come into play. So it just basically says, keep us posted, just like Ms. Shoshon said, so.
Absolutely. And that's, I just wanted to assure that you were comfortable that we had the same status that the charter language had.
Yes, I would, with what you heard, I agree.
I would ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on that. I see that you have a sheet. Mr. Loeb, did you want to comment further on this item?
Well, there is one question I'd like to ask.
If you would come to the podium, please. Thank you, sir.
I kind of thought what I said was talking about the sales tax, but there is a question I brought up. Does this have anything to do with the case itself, or anything about the ruling, in other words, being next month or anything like that on the thing, or will it be evidence or something?
It may eventually be used as evidence that all of the different parties have come to this agreement, but it doesn't have anything to do with the ruling at all or anything that happened. It was in the works and would have gone, it would have gone forward regardless.
Anyway, rather. Thank you.
Counsel, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving an interlocal agreement regarding the distribution of the transportation sales SRTAX proceeds. Is there a motion?
We approve the resolution as described.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, item 8B, a second public hearing and reading of ordinance 1471 approving the voluntary annexation of 8701 Elmdale Place, annexation number 18-05. The public hearing is now open. City Planner Mary Ann Abrahamson will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is the second public hearing and reading for voluntary annexation of 8701 Elmdale Place. The owner and applicant, Russell Patterson, and The owner and applicant are Russell Patterson and Candy Gale. As discussed, this request is to annex one parcel on the southeast corner of Davis Road and Elmdale Place. The proposed future land use is residential nine in the city, and the proposed zoning is single-family residential seven in the city. Per the 2018 Hillsborough County Tax Collector, this property has an assessed value of $139,000 approximately, an ad valorem of approximately $1,800. The city's Development Review Committee reviewed this application and found no objections to the level of service provisions for this property being annexed, and staff recommends that council approve ordinance 1471 for the voluntary annexation of 8701 Elmdale Place.
Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Council member questions?
None.
If the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance?
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of one parcel of certain real property totaling 0.27 plus minus acres, lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County, and located at the southeast corner of Davis Road and Elmdale Place, with an address of 8701 Elmdale Place legally described in Exhibit A attached here to and made a part hereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1471?
Madam Mayor, I move that we table this until after we have an opportunity to have our annexation workshop, which is scheduled next month, so we can all make a more informed decision.
Do we have a second?
I'm going to second for discussion.
With a lay on the table, it is a not debatable item, so we'll go to, we'll go to a vote with a lay on the table. So we have a second, so we go to a vote. All in favor of laying on the table until our annexation workshop, which does have a scheduled date of?
May 16.
Of May 16. So we will lay on the table until the meeting following the May 16 annexation. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So do you need a motion to approve? I move to approve the second reading, public hearing and reading of ordinance 1471 approving the voluntary annexation of 8701 Elmdale Place.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I won't belabor everybody by renewing my objections from last, our last meeting, but I do want the record to reflect that, in my opinion, this makes no sense when we have a workshop scheduled. We could simply postpone this. This property may be in the area that we decide is part of our goals, and I might vote in favor of it at that time, but why, I don't understand why we're in such a rush to do this when we have a workshop scheduled. Why would we not want to make the best informed decision we could make? I don't understand, so.
Councilman Chambers.
When I seconded the previous motion to, for discussion, the question I had, if we do this for this property, postpone it to the annexation workshop, what about the next two annexations we're going to hear tonight? What's the difference? And that's the question I had, you know, and we didn't get a chance for that discussion.
Well, and Councilman Chambers, I think it's an excellent question that you raised. During our strategic planning session, not quite a month ago, we all seemed to be in great agreement about pursuing very aggressively corporate in business and industrial annexations, where we probably had the most, I don't want to say heated, but certainly enlivened discussion was around our residential growth and the challenges, and I think Ms. Rennie tonight commented on two of the areas that we regularly roll our eyes of Rain Tree, of the subdivision out by Telecom, where two houses are ours and one's not, and one's the county, and two houses are ours. And it seems, and as I went back and watched the tape and have done some research, it seems like we're now potentially creating that by stepping into an area with one home, when we had four homeowners here last week, or two weeks ago stating, no thank you. So it seems like as a council, we all seem to feel pretty good about business, corporate, industrial growth, and where some of the dissension and most heated or lively discussion among this body was where and how do we want to grow residential. So I think, I think Mr. Ross raises a very good point. We have an annexation workshop planned, and I believe a good part of our discussion will be about where and how, what are the geographies of residences we hope to grow. Councilman Donahue, I apologize.
That's okay. Last year, I'm not sure exactly what part of the year, what month it was, but we annexed two residential lots that were vacant because someone wanted to build, and the person, I don't know if they were building for someone, or, but I know the builder himself came to us and asked for those. And that was particularly in the area that Ms. Rennie mentioned, where it kind of comes and goes around the upper level there by North River Hills. And there was no hesitation on our part, so I, I'm unclear as to why this is surfacing at this point, because we do have properties on the east side of Davis Road that are already ours. So this isn't, this isn't the only part that's going to stick out, is what I'm saying, when you look at the, at the whole, at the larger map. So I also feel like, you know, the directors have gone to, to do their due diligence, and they said that they didn't see a problem with this. They, we've also advertised this at least twice in the newspaper. I just don't see, I understand the workshop is coming, and I'm looking forward to that, but I hate to, at this point, pull the rug out from this particular piece of property. So I will vote for this.
Councilman Ross, and then Councilman Chambers, thank you.
Just, that was brought up last week, too. Thank you for bringing it up again, so I can explain. I'm not, I'm not being inconsistent. The two properties that you alluded to on the north side of Fowler's, the camel's already got the nose under the tent up there. That's already, that's already a mess of this house, that house, is the county, this house, that's already a mess. So to add two more really didn't change the scenario. This, this is the first time the camel gets a nose under the tent with this one, because this is a 20-home neighborhood, and this is one house. So if we could roll back the clock, I would like to have not created what we have north of Fowler with Rain Tree and all that, but we can't, none of us can roll back the clock. And the people that made those decisions back then, they made them with good intent, you know, but it, but what we have up there now north of Fowler is a mess, we all know it. And just because we have a mess on Davis, too, doesn't mean that the excuse to make it bigger, it's a, it's a, it's a perfect opportunity to say, look, we already have these jagged lines, let's not make this problem any worse till we figure out what it is we're doing. And the petitioner, I didn't get the email, I don't know.
I didn't either.
Mrs. Rennie referred to an email, it must have gone in the junk folder, because I'm not aware of an email, but the petitioner, this is not about them. I'm sure they're good people, it's not about them, I don't, I don't know who they are. But our first duty, all of us here, and I'm not lecturing you, I mean, you know this, our first duty up here is to the people who elected us, not the people who live in the county that want to join us. And so I wouldn't have any problem at all looking those people in the eye and saying, yes, you're going to have to wait until May or June for a final decision on this. I'm not even saying I'm against this. If we determine at our workshop that this is an area that we think is advantageous to the city to grow in, I'll vote in favor of it. I just think it would be prudent to wait. What's the, you're talking weeks, it's six weeks or whatever, I mean, it's not, it's not like we're putting this off till October. We have a date, we're going to have some discussion. We may decide that area is an area that we want to grow in, in which case I'd be in favor of it. So anyway, you get my point.
Councilman Chambers.
Okay, at the last meeting, I think I said I would be agreeable to postponing this annexation until the workshop, and I see your point, and I really, in this case, I don't think there's a time urgency. So Councilmember Donahue, I may change my mind, and I need to know from somebody on that end of the table, you know, where are we on these motions now?
We have a motion, and we have a second, we're in discussion, and so as soon as all of our comments and discussion is done, we will be taking a vote.
To table, not to turn it down, is that right?
No, we already, we already voted not to table. So this motion is to?
This motion is to approve, so if?
If we deny this motion tonight, what, does that mean that we have to start the process over the next time?
That's what I was going to.
We're definitely going to have to advertise it again in order to bring it back, so.
I think if we, correct, if I'm, I don't know, but I think that if we postpone this until date certain, I think we can do that, understanding that we've got a complaint amendment that we'll have to do the same thing with, as well as a rezoning on this piece of property as well. But I do think if we postpone it to date certain, we could look at a calendar and certainly pick a date to re-advertise it after our annexation.
I'd like, does the city clerk agree with that?
Considering that there's already been a motion to table and that failed, you can continue something rather than table it. Table it generally means that you're, well, no, tabling it means you've already started. Continuing it is if you haven't started at all. Well, you've got a motion that's been made and seconded, unless you're going to withdraw the motion, you need to go forward and vote on that, but you'd have to start the process again.
Well, I don't want to start the process again. I don't want to cost the city to do that again, so, James?
Yes, I'm over here.
He's waving his hand over there, so I'll give my?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chambers.
Okay, so if I withdraw my second, then where would we be?
Then, then the motion would be dead, and if we would like to at that point, if we would like at that point for someone to, I think it's acceptable if someone wanted to make the motion to lay on the table based on our discussion, to a date certain as Mr. Stevenson has indicated, and I would assume it would probably be either the first or the second meeting in June, since our meeting is May 16, that we would, even if staff has given any assignments to fulfill between the 16th, it could easily be ready by either the first meeting in June or the second meeting in June, if council has any strong opinions, if they'd prefer it at the first meeting in June or the second meeting in June.
I would suggest as soon as we can after our workshop. I mean, I don't want to keep people waiting unnecessarily, and I realize that we're putting them off, but we have some things that have to happen. First of all, hypothetically, he would have to withdraw his motion, and then the motion would die, and then somebody other than me would have to make it, because I've already made the motion, it failed, I can't make it again, so.
Correct.
Hypothetically speaking, that's what's got to happen.
That is correct. And tonight, you have to understand that for any motion to pass tonight, there has to be an affirmative vote of three. So it's going to have to be a unanimous vote for any motion tonight to be carried.
Really?
We're missing, we have a quorum based on the fact that there's got to be four to be a quorum. The mayor makes the fourth for the quorum, but the mayor still can't vote, which means for any motion to pass, it has to be an affirmative vote of three.
Correct.
Well, in that case, I would like to rescind my motion, which you don't have to worry about moving your second, and, and I want to make sure that I say this correctly, because I want this to be discussed at the annexation meeting, this particular parcel, not just general, because this person does deserve an answer at some point. So, am I continuing this?
No, you will be laying on the table to a date certain, so based on Mr. Ross's, Mr. Ross's assertion, it would be the first meeting in June, so the first Tuesday in June.
All right, then I would like to lay this petitioner on the table until the first council meeting in June.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, if I could just put on the record that that would be June 4.
June 4.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
So we can skip C.
Well, and we may need to, I'm looking at Ms. Shoshon, I think we will need to make the same motion for both items 8C and 8D.
Correct.
So I will introduce the topic, the second public hearing and reading of ordinance 1475 approving the comprehensive plan amendment for 8701 Elmdale Place. The public hearing is now opened. City Planner Mary Ann Abrahamson will explain. Or you might want to give a very abbreviated presentation.
Yes, I will give a very abbreviated presentation. This is the second public hearing and reading for CPA 1805, the comprehensive plan amendment application for 8701 Elmdale Place. The request is to change the future land use from residential six in the county to residential nine in the city. The planning commission found this request consistent, and staff recommends approval of the ordinance for CPA 1805.
Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Council member questions? We'll ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for one parcel of land located on the southeast corner of Elmdale Place and Davis Road, with an addressable location of 8701 Elmdale Place consisting of approximately 0.27 plus minus acres by changing the future land use designation on said property from residential six Hillsborough County to residential nine Temple Terrace for CPA 1805, providing for amendment to the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Would entertain a motion at this time?
Is this required? I mean, we obviously?
I think to be clean, it is required. We're going to have to go through these three items.
Okay, I make a motion that we table this until the June 4 council meeting.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Motion carries, thank you. Item 8D, a second reading, hearing and reading of ordinance 1476 approving the zoning reclassification of 8701 Elmdale Place. The public hearing is now open. City Planner Mary Ann Abrahamson will explain.
Again, this is the second public hearing and reading for the rezone application for 8701 Elmdale Place. The request is to change the zoning from R C six in the county to R seven in the city. The planning commission has found the request consistent with a comprehensive plan. The city's DRC has no objection, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 1476 for the R C P 1807.
Thank you. Once again, are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. If the clerk would please read title of ordinance 1476.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 0.27 plus minus acres of land located on the southeast corner of Elmdale Place and Davis Road, with an address of 8701 Elmdale Place from zoning classification residential single-family conventional six in Hillsborough County to single-family residential seven in Temple Terrace for R Z P 18-07, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion?
I move to table this matter till the June 4 meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Motion carries, thank you. Next item, 8E, a second public hearing and reading of ordinance 1480 approving the comprehensive plan amendment for 8901 Mason Drive, CPA 18-07. The public hearing is now open. City Planner Andrea College will explain.
Good evening, council members and mayor. This is the second public hearing and reading for CPA 1807 Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the property located at 81, oh, there it is, 8901 Mason Drive. Owner is Henry Vickery. The property was annexed on March 5, and this is amending the future land use map from community mixed use in the county to industrial in the city. The planning commission found the request consistent with The planning commission found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan and staff recommends counsel to approve ordinance 1480 for CPA 1807.
Thank you, Ms. College. Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? The public hearing is now closed. Counsel questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for one parcel of land located in the southeast corner of Mason Drive in Professional Place with an addressable location of eight nine zero one Mason Drive consisting of approximately 2.21 plus minus acres by changing the future land use designation on said property from community mixed use twelve in Hillsborough County to industrial in Temple Terrace for CPA 1807, providing for amendment to the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1480.
I move to approve second public hearing and reading of ordinance 1480 approving the comprehensive plan amendment of eight nine zero one Mason Drive.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Continuing. Item eight F, a second public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance 1481 approving the zoning reclassification of eight nine zero one Mason Drive, R Z P eighteen dash zero nine. The public hearing is now open. City Planner, Mary Ann Abrahamson, will explain.
Good evening. Again, this is the second public hearing and reading for R Z P eighteen oh nine zoning reclassification application for eighty nine oh one Mason Drive. As mentioned, this property was annexed into the city on March 5th. It's located on the southeast corner of Professional Place and Mason Drive. And the zoning request is to change the zoning from manufacturing in the county to light industrial in the city, as this is in the U.S. 301 industrial area. The planning commission found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan. The city's DRC has no objection and staff recommends that counsel approve ordinance 1481 for zoning reclassification eighty nine oh one Mason Drive.
Thank you. Are there citizens who would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel member questions? Seeing none, we'd ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 2.21 plus minus acres of land located on the southeast corner of Mason Drive in Professional Place with an address of eight nine zero one Mason Drive from zoning classification manufacturing Hillsborough County to light industrial in Temple Terrace for R Z P eighteen oh nine, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1481.
Move to approve the second public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance 1481 approving the zoning reclassification of eight nine zero one Mason Drive.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item, second public hearing and reading of ordinance 1478 approving the comprehensive plan amendment for seventy one eighteen East Fowler Avenue, CPA eighteen dash zero six. The public hearing is now open. City Planner Andrea College will explain.
Good evening. This is the second public hearing and reading for the CPA 1806 Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the property located at seven one one eight East Fowler Avenue. Applicant Nick Refray is here. This property, we don't have a... Okay, we don't have the PowerPoint. Oh, there it is. The property was annexed on March 5th. The future land use map amendment request is to go from residential six in the county to commercial in the city. The planning commission found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan and staff recommends counsel approve ordinance 1478 for CPA 1806.
Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel member questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for one parcel of land located north of Fowler Avenue, east of North Drive and west of River Hills Drive with an addressable location of seven one one eight Fowler Avenue consisting of approximately 0.58 acres by changing the future land use designation on said property from residential six in Hillsborough County to commercial in Temple Terrace for CPA 1806, providing for amendment to the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1478?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Man, a few words.
All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a second public hearing and reading of ordinance 1479 approving the zoning reclassification of seventy one eighteen East Fowler Avenue, R Z P eighteen dash zero eight. The public hearing is now open. City Planner Andrea College will explain.
This is the second public hearing and reading for the property located seven one one eight East Fowler Avenue. Owner Halaf Massour and applicant Nick Refray, the applicant is here. The background on this was the property was annexed on March 5th. The zoning request is to change from commercial neighborhood in the county to commercial general in the city in order to, for the use to continue. The waivers were requested to grant the conditional use at the same time as the zoning classification and to grant a waiver from the requirement that the auto repair use be three acres or more. So, because the site is half an acre. The, in addition to that, the property has conditions of approval that the applicant has been made aware of. They will have to provide landscaping buffers, shield, outdoor storage areas, and bring all signage into compliance and address any lighting and glare spillover onto other properties. They also understand that if, when they redevelop, they'll need to come into full compliance with the land development code except for the items waived during the rezoning. Planning commission found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan. The city's development review committee had no objections and staff recommends counsel approve ordinance 1479 to adopt zoning reclassification application, R Z P eighteen oh eight, with conditions and waivers provided therein.
Thank you, Ms. College. Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? The public hearing is now closed. Counsel member questions? Councilman Donahue.
You said something that threw me off. You said when they re, when they redevelop this, they, the waivers will still stand. That's the way I understood it. That's not...
Yes.
That's not your words. So what does that mean going forward?
What that means is if they decided to change the, the, the use and do anything that is commercial general, the waiver doesn't really apply unless it's automotive use. If they have automotive use, the waiver continues. That's, that's the point.
Thank you.
Councilman Ross.
You said the petitioner's here?
The applicant is.
The applicant is here. I have a question for him. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. I just wanted to get your take on the conditions of approval. You're okay with these conditions that the planning staff has laid out?
We don't have no problem with this because the, the property or the business is still established since 20 years ago. It's the same thing.
But the conditions that you'll have to make some changes?
No, no, we don't have no problem. We're going to do that anyway. We're going to make it look better and all this.
Okay.
It's better appearance to bring more customers and...
Well, thank you very much, sir.
We took this in, you know, in consideration, actually.
Thank you.
We will do whatever it takes to make the city look better.
Thank you for keeping that business going.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Elmer has been keeping a lot of us going for a long time.
He comes there every week.
Thank you, sir. If the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 0.58 acres plus or minus of land located north of Fowler Avenue, east of North Drive and west of River Hills Drive with an address of seven one one eight East Fowler Avenue from zoning classification residential commercial neighborhood in the county to commercial general in Temple Terrace for R Z P eighteen oh eight, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1479.
Move to approve ordinance 1479.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Counsel, is there any carryover business from our previous meeting? New business? We have a Water Goat presentation. Would invite Sue Drenberg to the podium to share news on the installation of the Water Goat.
Good evening. Sue Drenberg, eight oh five Gascon Place in Temple Terrace. Mayor, counsel, Charles, Pamela. Nice to see everybody again. This might be the last time you hear from me about the Water Goat. So I'm going to say a few words of thanks. But tonight, I am happy to announce that on Saturday, April 20th, at 9:00 a.m., the Water Goat will be constructed and installed at the end of the canal in our Riverside Park at two oh one South River Hills Drive. This will be an effective tool in catching floating debris that comes out of the nearby storm drain and traps it, preventing it from polluting the Hillsborough River. All are invited to stop by on that day or visit the Water Goat anytime thereafter. Hard at work. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to our amazing city of Temple Terrace from Mayor Urato, city manager Charles Stevenson, and city council members. To Chairman Nathaniel Redman of our Riverwatch Task Force for joining forces with me at the city's Parks and Recreation Department Touch a Truck event, bringing so much awareness to stormwater outfalls on a river, to our community, and also to individual Temple Terrace employees that have offered their support and assistance to me in so many ways. To our Temple Terrace Women's Club, Garden Club, Arts Council, and our Junior Women's Club for being so helpful with my fundraising efforts by acquiring my booths at each event in our beautiful venue, Woodmont Park, that enabled me to raise almost $3,000 towards the city's purchase of our first, I hope, Water Goat. To Mark McSimowitz, who unfortunately couldn't be present tonight, the founder of Water Goat, and Moira Foley from Water Goat, right here, for educating event attendees by displaying a model of the goat for people to see and make a huge personal effort in keeping our waterways clean. To keep Tampa Bay beautiful, specifically my new friend, Executive Director Debbie Everson, by managing the volunteers who will maintain our Water Goat, including recording the data of the removed debris, which provides the physical information of its success. And possibly the most important part of this effort, which from now on will be known as the Temple Terrace River Friends, are also the many residents of our city that took to this cause so eagerly with great interest and concern for our river. I just have to say that the first weekend that we went to the Temple Terrace Arts and Crafts Festival, the outpouring of interest just totally just surprised me. At one point, I ran across the park. I found Councilwoman Donahue, woman Donahue, and I said, "I can't believe this." It's like $2,000. And she's like, "What?" So it's, it's amazing when you take one person and multiply it by all those people that really are really interested in this cause. So hopefully, they'll come and visit the park. They'll bring children to the park. They'll, you know, educate their children on anti-littering and see, actually see it physically happening, you know, being stopped from going out into the waterways that eventually goes into all our estuaries, you know, everywhere. So, last but not least, two very important men. First, my ever supportive, you can do this husband Doug Drenberg, sitting here on the end, doing everything I asked of him to get the calendars and all additional props completed on demand and never saying no when I needed help. Kudos to his company, Dimension Printing, for their complete support. And then, if you didn't know about Bob Luce and his amazing passion for nature before, now you do. If it weren't for Bob raising awareness about shoreline litter and the effect it can have on the wildlife that calls the river home, I wouldn't have started my campaign to battle this problem. I'm happy to say that my husband and I have become friends with Bob and maybe, just maybe, someday he'll convince me to overcome my fear of gators and snakes and kayak with him on the river. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you, everyone. Thank you. So we have a check to present to keep Tampa Bay beautiful. Is camera ready? So this is a check for $2,800 that we're going to give to Tampa Bay Beautiful. They have already given the total of $3,000 to Water Goat. But this is from us on our behalf to keep Tampa Bay beautiful. And thank you for all your help. Don't go ahead. Get in there.
Thank you, Ms. Drenberg. And I would ask both Ms. Drenberg and Councilman Ross would love, and I think all of us on council would love, perhaps on a quarterly basis, to have an update on, on what's, what's, what the Water Goat is catching. And just, just ongoing updates would be wonderful. But thank you, thank you for your work. And Councilman Ross.
Yes, I just...
I do have one more comment. The way I understand it, and I've been told from Debbie Everson, to keep Tampa Bay Beautiful, they also provide the signage that will show the city of Temple Terrace as, you know, the owner who made sponsor of this Water Goat, one with a few with more that I've also put on this check, they'll be on the sign. And I've spoken with Mr. Stevenson, and we don't want the sign in the back of the park by the water. We want it near the street. So that people can say, "Stop looking at the water in these areas." So we talked about that practicality and it's going to happen.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank a couple people that deserve some recognition. And there's been a lot of work that went on behind the scenes in this. Excuse me. Obviously, the lion's share of it has been by Mrs. Drenberg. Thank you so much for tackling this project. It's probably never would have gotten done had you not stepped up. And thank you, Dr. Luce, for all the work that you do on the river on an ongoing basis and you have for many years. And a lot of us know what you do and appreciate what you do in Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful also. City staff, there's some people that have really rolled up their sleeves and helped to make this happen. Mr. Stevenson has been very agreeable to helping us find a site that this would work. And, and Mr. Tinch, he and I have been out there wading through the weeds, looking for a good place to put this. And Councilwoman Donahue for making the right connections. And all the men and women who serve on the Riverwatch Task Force on a regular basis. So a lot of people had a lot to do with this. And it's a work in progress. We're getting it up. We'll see in the rainy season if it works as good as we anticipate it to work, or if it has to be relocated, or, you know, we'll, we'll make some adjustments as necessary. But we're in a good spot and it's a good timing. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Councilman Donahue.
I just want to say, this is, you know, we, we've had people say, "Why do you say you're an amazing city?" Well, it's because of citizens and citizen-led movements like this. I mean, when Sue and Doug and I had coffee at Dunkin' Donuts eight months ago, you know, it was a great idea that she took and ran with, but it wasn't just one citizen. She made sure she involved a lot of different people. And I'm really happy to see that we now have another partnership with Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful because we haven't really had an active partnership in a while and this hopefully will get us jump-started again to move forward. And, and it, it happened absolutely, just like you said, Mr. Ross. It happened one calendar at a time, but it also took a lot of time and effort to sit at that booth and sell them and keep track and all that other good stuff. So thank you very much. And I can't let the evening go without saying happy birthday to, to Doug.
Thank you. Is there any additional new business to come before counsel?
I just have an announcement of an event that's coming up. The Temple Terrace Women's Club, forty-six years ago, they started this little tiny event in the home of one of the members. And the members got together to just pray for the community. And well, you know, move forward forty-six years and they can't do it in anyone's home anymore. And so now they're hosting the annual Community Prayer Breakfast. On April 26th at 7:00 a.m., they promised to have you fed and hopefully have a few moments of spirituality and be out the door at 9:00 o'clock in the morning. So the tickets are on sale for $15. You can buy them on Eventbrite. Or if you know a, a women's club member, myself and Mary Mel, you can stop us and I'm sure we'll make sure to sell you a ticket. So just wanted everybody to know that's April 26th. Thank you.
Councilman Ross.
Mr. Stevenson, you going to talk about Relay for Life in your report?
I hadn't planned on it. Go ahead.
Could you? April 12th?
A week from this Friday.
April 12th is the, for, just for the public to...
Don't let him talk about it. Don't let him talk about it.
The Temple Terrace Relay for Life is April the 12th at Greco Middle School. It's a great event. City staff has done a tremendous job of raising money. They would like to raise even more. They've really done a tremendous job this year. So, what time does it start?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. So, be great to see everybody out there for that.
It goes from six to six?
Yep.
Six PM.
Six PM to six AM. Yes. And I do have one item. This was a very well-attended meeting when we discussed vacation rentals. And for citizens who are watching, who have a concern over it, as the League of Cities as we're watching several bills, it was a hot topic on Monday's call, and it is moving through House Bill 987, preempts local government's control over vacation rentals. There would be no occupancy limits in homes. It would not matter if you were deed restricted or you had an HOA that said it couldn't happen. This will take that authority and power away. So, if you could reach out, if you are a citizen who is concerned about vacation rentals, it's House Bill 987. Also, companion bills, Senate Bill 824, and Senate Bill 1720. So, they, if you are a citizen who is concerned about vacation rentals in our community, now is the time to reach out on those items. Any other new business? We will go to our city manager's report. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick notices here. We've got the town hall meeting scheduled for April 18th. We'll be discussing the transportation surtax and the status of things as far as what we're proposing and where we're at with, you know, some of the lawsuits that had been filed as well as, we'll give a brief on the, you know, local agreement and everybody's buy-in with that. Along with that, we'll also be giving a redevelopment update to the community, and we'll go from there with discussions with the community. So, the other thing, just to give counsel an update, the golf club had made their quarterly payment to us yesterday, so they are current and they remain current. Good news.
Good news. Is there any other business to come before this body? We are adjourned.